I started the livestream.
All right, okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Brendan, would you call the roll of things?
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. McGory? Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Zuloff?
Here.
Mr. Jackson? Mr. Wayland?
Here.
Ms. Castiel? Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of September 22. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to accept those minutes as submitted.
And a motion in second?
Approve those minutes as submitted.
Thank you. Third, second?
Second.
And a motion in second. Discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Mr. Oaks, we have one item of new business on our agenda type which you, your presentation you wish to present?
Yep. Chairman, we have one. It's for 1012 Columbus Avenue. We have a zoning map amendment. CAGLNC submitted to change the current zoning, which is R2F public facilities, to RMF residential multifamily. So, the surrounding zoning to the north is local business. The east is the same as the current building, which is R2F two-family residential. The south is R2F two-family residential. And then west is local business. The existing use of this property is vacant and used to be a church, we believe. So, the parcel is mostly adjacent to what I just said, which is R2F and local business. So, they're looking to expand the building into a three-dwelling unit. R2F only allows two units per parcel. So, they're trying to reutilize this into apartments. So, according to the city's bicentennial vision comprehensive plan, this neighborhood has several strong recommendations that could be addressed with this rezoning. And it's to repurpose vacant buildings and then support the development and rehabilitation of a variety of housing types that meet the current needs of future, current needs of, wait, no, excuse me, meet the new, meet the needs of current and future residents, including rehabilitated homes, townhomes, new infill, single-family housing, upper-floor condos, lofts of affordable housing, senior housing, et cetera, et cetera. So, following the loss of religious institution that was here, it was Firelands Grace Church that proposed reuse offers a great opportunity to provide more housing options in this neighborhood of Sandusky. The applicant's proposing to rezone so that 3,500 square feet can be used for long-term leases. The walkability from this area to downtown and then also the Firelands Regional Medical Center makes the site easily connected and desirable for this rezoning. Staff has examined the city's bicentennial plan, and it relates to this area. And we believe this rezoning could offer great potential towards developing human capital connectivity and help shape Sandusky as a livable city. The rezoning to residential multifamily is the minimum zoning change to permit the applicant's proposed project. In staff's opinion, the RMF zoning will create a logical transition between the adjacent local business and also the surrounding residential, excuse me, two-family residential on the side of the parcel. So, based on Chapter 1113 Amendment to the zoning code, zoning maps may be amended periodically in order to keep. It rests with the new zoning techniques as well as when following general conditions arise. Whenever general hardship prevails throughout a given district is the first. The second is whenever a change occurs in land use, transportation, other sociological trends either within or surrounding the community. And then third, when other extensive developments are proposed that do not comply but would be in the public interest, which would be this case here. So, understanding the goals set for this area by the city's comprehensive plan and the reasons previously stated in this report, staff believes the zoning could satisfy the above conditions. And in conclusion, staff recommends the approval of the proposed zoning amendment on 1012 Columbus Avenue.
So, that's the conclusion of your presentation, Mr. Oaks?
I'm sorry. We recommend approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
I want to make sure we hear from anyone who's here to speak on this issue tonight. First, I want to give staff and the commissioners an opportunity to ask any questions of Mr. Oaks before we hear from any members of the public.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. It's, the proposal is to turn the property into a three-family unit or a complex, correct?
Correct. And then, yeah, I also forgot to mention that the applicant is more or less interested in long-term rentals, so transient, they stated, is not on their radar. So, this would be three long-term rental units.
So, is it two residential units in the main, is there, are there two separate buildings that we're talking about? That's my question.
No. So, in this diagram here, the building to the south of this site plan is the parcel we're looking at and the building we're looking at.
Okay. So, all three units will be in the one building?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That's what I, I just, but for, as far as parking, that parking lot that goes off towards Neal Street, that's, that's attached or included in this parcel?
Correct. And any parking requirements will have on a later date for a different application when they go through their site plan and parking.
So, that's not, that's not owned by the current owner?
To clarify through the chair if I may, all four of the parcels that are shown here are owned by the applicant. The other three parcels are zoned a combination of either local business or R2F. So, where the parking is located is zoned R2F at this time, as long, as well as the church building. So, there's four parcels together all in one deed.
Okay.
All right. Could you, could you point to the parcels you're talking about because I'm, I'm losing you here.
Go back to the zoning map.
It's still not consistent with the descrip, the surrounding zoning description in the applicat, in the application.
Do we have, let me see. I can use the mouse on here. Nope. Let's see if I can. So, there's the one that outlined in red that they own. And then, the one just north of that, so like the narrow blue one, the one north of that, which is like a little fatter blue one, and the one that's like L-shaped, that's blue. So, those three are the other parcels. Does that make sense?
Maybe you could find a pointer.
Like, it's, oh, it's this one, this one, this one, and this one. So, one, three, four.
Everything to the north.
Yes.
Except the corner.
Yes.
All right. So, on the, on the, I'm sorry, I'm sort of jumping in.
Yeah, sort of.
Pete? Is it okay to?
It is.
Thank you. So, it says, "To the south, two-family residential church."
Yeah, I believe the building to the south was also a church at one point. So, there's two churches.
That narrow band is, okay, but that's not owned by, that was a church. What is it now?
Correct. I believe it's vacant.
It is.
I'm sorry?
Yep. I believe it's vacant.
It's vacant.
It, it, it's also vacant at this time, but it was a church.
I believe both these buildings, I don't know if they're the same church, but I believe at one point they're both operating churches.
Thank you for indulgence, Mr. McGory.
You're welcome.
Castiel, I'm sorry.
I, I.
Was answered?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. McGory?
No. The simple answer to my original question is all three units are going to be in the, what I'll call, main church building.
Correct.
And nothing is part of this project impacts any of the other real estate?
The building that, just to the north, they also are going to put either one or two units in, which they would be allowed to by the base zoning, by local business zoning. That's why we recommended that they rezone only this parcel. So, it was the minimum intervention.
Right.
You know, required to accomplish their project. And then you've got, you know, since you've got the two-family to the south and then the local business to the north, the multifamily in the middle becomes kind of your logical transition between the higher intensity zoning to the lower intensity zoning.
And multi, just to ask a question for, for background, multifamily would allow more than three units, but in this case, we're just talking a proposal for three units?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. Did I understand you to say something to the effect of expanding the building? Or is it just re-subdividing or subdividing the building within its current envelope?
So, it's, yeah, it's subdividing in its current footprint. They're not expanding or extending the building.
Any idea how long it's been vacant or what it looks like inside?
I'm honestly not sure. I don't know if the current owner, the applicant that's here, I'm assuming, has any answer to that, but staff does not have any knowledge.
Mr. Casper, why don't you come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record?
Brian Casper, 2007 Santa Point Road. The, the building was a church. I would say that it was, it had not-so-regular meetings and is completely gutted. In fact, the building to the north, when we, when we bought it, had about 300 crack pipes in it. And someone had been living under the church for a number of months in, in those buildings as well. We took two 40-yard dumpsters out of the building to the north of that church. Our plan would be to make it a nice midtown, upscale apartments, three, three of them, two, two-bedroom and one-three-bedroom.
Well, Mr. Casper, is there any questions of Mr. Casper?
Not here.
Thank you.
One, I can just, real quick. And it's kind of for staff as well. Would local business allow for multifamily residential?
No. Local business, well, it can in some cases. Local business allows for the highest intensity residential use of any contiguous zoning district. So, in this case, it wouldn't allow three units.
I guess that's a question for them.
And this not particularly germane to this one, but on the general principle of churches that are no longer functioning as church, any idea how long it's been vacant or how long it's been since it's had worship services there?
I know they did have an Easter service there. Prior to that, I can tell, the only thing I can tell you is all winter, their plumbing had been broken and running in the building. So, I would imagine maybe Christmas before that. I don't know that answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
You're welcome.
Another question about, about the application here. So, what other solutions were considered or exist other than rezoning to achieve this? Is there no other option to, no variance, conditional use, any, any of that available here? Because it's, you know, going from two units would be legal to three and exercising and creating legislation and everything else, I want to make sure that we're not exercising the system more than we need to. Is this the only option for allowing a third unit rather than permanently rezoning the parcel for anything under the proposed new zoning?
That's a good question. My understanding, if we went for a variance, would it be, it would be a use variance? Does that sound correct?
That's correct.
And a use variance is a.
It would be what?
A use variance and not an area variance. And the use variances are generally difficult to make a case for and also pretty advised against, just in my understanding of pursuing use variances. They're not often pursued. I don't recall the conditional use language in our zoning, like, in detail, but I, my memory of it is that it's very vague and also only applicable to, in small cases. Do you, Alec, do you have a comment about that?
Yeah, I can, I can add second that. As far as I know, we try to avoid the use variances as staff as much as possible. And I think as staff, as we discussed that avenue, that this was the best-case scenario, at least for a first step, to at least attempt this.
Yeah. Well, you, you understand what I'm getting at though, right?
Yeah.
Because we're talking legislation and everything else. And, and we're, we're over, we're over-killing, we're overshooting what we're trying to achieve here. We're, we're totally permanently changing the allowed uses on the parcel forever or, or until further notice, just to allow one more apartment.
Until we change it back.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I mean, Mrs. Zuloff makes a very good point. We brought out the elephant gun to deal with what seems to be a relatively small issue. But if staff's saying that's the best way to do it, but, you know, it's got to be, it's got to go, it has to be approved here, and it has to be approved by the city commission. We're doing all this for one lot. That does not seem to be a very smart way of doing business. So, I, I don't think we should throw, personally, I don't believe in throwing a wrench in the process at this point, but I would like to reexamine this and see if there are other changes that are needed to our ordinances so that we don't have to get out the elephant gun when we're just trying to make what seems like a reasonable accommodation. So, good point, Mrs. Zuloff.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just to rephrase what's being discussed here, I think the concept that's being presented is a reasonable and a logical concept, given every, given everything. And what we're all faced with and the property owner is faced with is trying to, to use the rules that which have been established already with good reason to have those rules. But in every one of these cases, we, we look at a, at a case and then, and say, "Well, jeez, this is reasonable, but how do we, how do we get this done in this particular case?" And then it comes down to, do we, everybody hates the term spot zoning. Do we, do we do that? But we've done that because it's reasonable and logical to do. And that's, I guess that's the trouble with rules in general, is that they're hard to apply in every given situation. So.
I understand. Also, a good point.
Mr. Chairman, it, it's maybe worse than we realize. We have the option, it's, it's a zoning change. It's a, it, we don't have to have a public hearing here, but city commission does to rezone this per, per the code. So, it may be more expedient to change the application if there's such a way. It may be faster for the applicant to do that, you know, if there is a way. I'm just raising the question. So, you know, even if we approve this tonight and they withdrew the application and found a better path that's faster, that'd be okay too. I'm inclined to, I haven't decided yet because I think, I think there may be people from the public that, but if it was our inclination that this is a good idea, it's, there's still other pathways. We, we'd still abort, abort the process and find a more expedient way if there is one. Just making that point.
Yeah, that's a good point. And it's one that we'll have to see how this plays out tonight. And then after that, the applicant and staff will have to huddle and see if maybe there isn't a better way to go about this. But unless there are further questions, right now, I'd like to hear from the public.
Sure.
See who's here, who has opinions and who would like to speak. So, if you'd like to speak to this proposed rezoning, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address and share with us whatever thoughts you might have. You've beaten the crush of the others racing to the microphone. Thank you.
My name is Faith Hickson, and I live at 115 Scott, which is around the corner from the proposing. We walk every day, sometimes a couple of times a day down that street. I just have a question. The building right next to it has a huge gaping hole in the roof. And it's in, the smaller building is in huge disrepair. And I just, it was hard to hear exactly all they were saying because of the situation with the mask. Seems like they weren't going to do anything with that building. And it's, I mean, it's.
Which, which building are you talking about?
This small building next to the church.
To the south?
To the north.
To the north.
It's, I mean, there's a huge hole in it every morning. We walk through, you can just see the rain pouring in. It's in pretty bad repair. I mean, I just, from what I heard, it was like, well, that may be something in the future. We're just talking about the actual church itself. And so, I just had a question about that because that building is in poor repair. And just a lot of curiosity, just because we walk past there every day. And, and the history of the building, I attend Calvary Baptist Church on East Perkins Avenue. That was a church that our church members bought, built in the Great Depression, made the bricks themselves, church members built it. So, it just has a lot of history. I mean, it's, it's changed hand many, many times since 1970 when they sold it. But, so it's just kind of got some nostalgia for us too, you know, what it's going to turn into or become. But just a concern about the, you know, the building on the other side and the disrepair it's in. So, I think.
Thank you, Ms. Hickson, for being here and proposing those questions. Since the owner is here, I wonder if he might be willing to share with us his plans regarding that building and maybe that would help.
Mr. Chairman, in the meantime, could we see the slide that was not in the packet that showed the plans? Thank you.
This one?
Yeah. I, I don't mean to hold you up there, Mr. Casper.
If you could go back to the slide before that, I'd love to fix all these houses in this area. In fact, I've made a few offers. I'd like to look at this whole district. But this is the building she's talking about. And it was, that's the one that was kind of a crack house, so to speak. And there is a giant hole in the roof. In fact, the building's condemned. I'm working with the staff to try and save it because I do want to make an apartment out of it. And I think it would add to the culture of the street. And it's a good-looking building. The front parapet leans back a bit, needs some reshoring up, but it's things that can easily be done. In fact, I'd be working on it now if I had approval to go ahead with the whole project. I've been working on this since probably August, but just waiting because, you know, I got to go through the processes. It, when, when, when I bought these parcels, I envisioned three apartments and the church apartment here. There's a huge backyard and plenty of parking. And this area is pretty blighted. If you walk it, it's, there's a lot of things that need help. In fact, there's tarps on the roof of the building back here. There's a pile of, you know, garbage and trees in the backyard of the, of a, of a next-door neighbor, but I would make.
This is the building to the south we're referring to?
The building which would be to the, would be the east.
East? Oh, okay. All right.
This building here, they were storing an empty boat on the lot that I was on. They had a dog cage around the back that they were just letting the animals do their business in the, on the parking lot and leaving it there. So, I've done a lot to clean up the area already, but I can't really move ahead without a, without a permission from you folks. But my plan would be to make this upscale, very nice. I mean, have you seen some of the apartments that I've done in the Renaissance II building downtown, some of which are selling for half a million dollars? Yeah, they won't be that, that, to that extent, but they'd be 100 times better than it is today.
Thank you. Just a question to staff. You decide who's going to field this one. Just so that everyone here knows what the process is, if we make a recommendation to rezone the, the site, how, how long does that play out before the applicant is able to proceed?
That goes to, so what, if you make the recommendation to proceed, then we can get the commission president Brady at the next city commission to set the public hearing. So, he has to announce that at a commission meeting. And then it's, we have to have at least 30 days to send out notices to area property owners and put an article in the newspaper. So, it gets rezoned. It would get, and then it would go in front of commission if they approve the rezoning at that meeting that was set. So, it would be.
I believe it's December 13th.
December 13th is what we were looking at.
It'd be, it'd be the end of the year before all that became final. Okay.
Yeah. And I don't believe there's a conditional use pathway to get this approved. We could look at that. I don't know if you all are able to make a motion to approve this with the condition that if there's a faster way that staff can do it without the rezoning or something like that, maybe that's a way you could help it move forward. I do think from a comprehensive standpoint, Columbus Avenue is our main corridor. It's a transportation corridor. Having multifamily zoning along with the different business zoning and, and, you know, two-family zoning isn't a really appropriate land use for Columbus Avenue in this area that's walkable to downtown and to, you know, regional employers. So, that's, you know, something to consider as well.
All right. Let me just see if there's, is there anyone else present who wishes to speak to the proposed rezoning? Wish there's additional questions or comments?
My only comment would be that we wouldn't have to condition anything. I, I mean, if, if we found a fast, we can approve this, if we found a faster pathway, the applicant could simply withdraw the application and, well, no, he couldn't because then we've made a recommendation to city commission and they got to act on it.
Yeah, they sometimes listen to us and sometimes don't.
Well, okay. I don't know. You're the lawyer. I'm, I'm inclined to at least signal the applicant that we want to do this, so we're going to find a way.
Who was, was that, Mr. Hile?
Correct. I am, I'm on virtually. I thought I might be able to kind of answer where Mr. Zuloff was going on the motion. My recommendation would be to not condition the motion on, with a kind of a triggering event. But I also agree with, with Ms. Blair that I, I am skeptical that a conditional use process would be faster because there are, there are notice provisions, a conditional use also requires a hearing. There are some other hurdles there. I think this is the fastest way, but if you all make a recommendation and the applicant and staff does determine that there is a faster way for them to proceed, there's no reason we can't dual-track something and then commission could just deny your recommendation.
Who here is a conditional use application? Us or BZA? I can't remember.
I believe it's planning. Yeah, it's planning.
Okay.
So, I'll just say what I think. I believe that this would substantially improve the neighborhood. I think it would be a good development, and I think it would clean up the blight. I've seen some of Mr. Casper's other investments and work, and he does it the right way and he gets it finished. So, I think for a lot of reasons, this is something that I'm quite willing to support and recommend to city commission. I don't mean to cut off the discussion though. Is there other, other thoughts?
Just while we're talking about, I, I too plan to support this. I think it's a good idea. I think that it works. And since we are talking about other ways, planned unit development is the only thing that I have thought of. How would that play out if they did something like that?
Has to be a lot larger.
Has to be a larger scale thing.
I don't think there's, I think we don't have a minimum.
Enough? And I, I don't know that it would be any faster.
It would be hearings and everything.
Matter. I'm just curious since we're discussing.
I thought it had to be larger, but I'm relying on what I remember learning in law school in 1984.
Having, having been there, having been there when we passed the legislation, I can say that it was discussed and I recall now minimum to give us that flexibility. So, what I, what we don't know, know is what's the notice requirement for conditional use? I don't think conditional use require, does that also require a public hearing and all that notice stuff?
It should.
I don't remember off the top of my head what it is, but I do know that it requires some type of notice.
Well, it's. All right.
Sorry to interrupt. This is, this is Brendan again. It does require both notice and a public hearing.
It should.
But, but the public hearing is a planning commission hearing, I believe.
Yeah. So, so we could have a special meeting if, and, and we probably don't need a 30-day notice either, do we?
It's 10 days?
Right. So, 10 days, we could have a special meeting in two weeks and.
Well.
And perhaps be done with it.
Apologies, Mr. Zuloff. I didn't mean to cut you off. But I did want to point out that I do also kind of share Aaron's, I don't know if concern is the right word, but we would have to take a look if it's appropriate for a conditional use permit as well. As our standard as well.
Yeah, just, just, just exploring, that's all.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Just to try to move this, from what I'm hearing, there could be a dual-track process here. I'm going to make a motion that this application be approved as is being recommended by staff. And to me, if you look at approval and what's being proposed or not approving it and leaving it as is, it's a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. So, I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. But just to clarify, when you say approval, we're approving the.
Recommending, recommending to the, the commission, city commission, yes.
Further discussion?
Through, Mr. Commissioner, to the staff, actually. You mentioned a use variance. And just for clarity for myself and for the public, could you elaborate a bit on that? Why it's, you said this would normally be something we would consider, but everybody agrees it's not a good idea. I'm just not familiar with that. I'm just not familiar with that. Could you explain what that is and why it's not a good idea?
Sure, so in order to go the variance route, you usually need like a really strong case of like inconvenience or like a really special scenario to why you can go against the zoning as it stands. So as staff, we felt they didn't have a really solid argument to why they would need that use variance. Um, so we felt that this was a better approach to get the, the accomplished goal.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
Since Board of Zoning Appeals is like a judicial body-
Sure, I wasn't sure if it was something- Okay, so it just, it, it's not gonna get them to their goal because it doesn't meet the requirements, basically.
Right, I don't believe that our Board of Zoning Appeals has ever approved a use variance. And from my understanding, just working other places, they're very uncommon. And it, it's, you almost have to prove that you can't use the property for anything in this zoning. You have to use it for something else.
Okay.
Or it's not valuable at all.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just one point. As long as we understand, we're, we are gonna exercise the city commission here, even if we do it perfunctorily. And because having made a recommendation, they will have to rule on it, but it might not be a big deal.
They don't have anything else to do, that's fine.
Alright.
They don't have enough.
Let's move on to even more. Let's go.
Okay, uh, Ms. Brody, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Magory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
Motion passes and it is recommended city commission. So, thank you. Um, what follows, and you're, you're free to leave, uh, uh, if you like, Mr. Casper, you're free to stay. Um, and obviously you both are as well, so. What we, we wanted to talk tonight a little bit about, um, some discussion, uh, that we've had, some, some building owners have had regarding some possible, uh, transient overlay districts. Um, and it's the first time this has been considered in a little while. We have an existing ordinance that permits that, but it has some requirements and it, I think we need to, uh, give some focus to. And does staff have a presentation that they'd like to make that can just look like you do?
I do.
Aaron, was this sent to us prior?
I did not send the presentation prior. I can send it as a follow-up if you'd like. I, um, There we go. That's not the one I wanted. That was the one I presented for, um, the meetings. So we held two meetings to discuss transient rental in the city. And those were, they had a baseline presentation. I saw a number of you there. Thank you for attending. Here we go, there's, the one that says planning commission is the one I wanted. Okay, fantastic.
I understand things come together at the last minute sometimes. Generally speaking, um, I think it's my preference and I think the commission's preference that if materials are available, available in advance, we'd like to study them so we're prepared.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, apologies for not having this ready before then. We were marking it up today and making final touches. I'm gonna grab my seat back and check.
You can plug that.
Yeah.
Alex is ahead of the game.
So we just have a little summary presentation for you from those two meetings that we conducted. And then we had an online citywide survey that was available for, I think, almost six weeks. And it was pushed out on social media several times, so I have some slides about that. And then just some considerations and recommendations from staff. I wanna give you a heads up, I have a commitment at six o'clock to participate in the longstanding Sandusky tradition of dressing up like a witch and walking down Columbus Avenue. So thank you for your support on that. Um, but you don't have to make a move on anything tonight. This is just informational for discussion. Um, it's not required because it's not an official agenda item. And we wanted to just kind of help with the discussion. I would also, just a reminder that, um, we do have two residents that are kind of property owners that have been asking about this. And I know Mr. Maldonado has been working on this for like a year and a half from, from his story there. And Mr. Stuck has been kind of pursuing this for about six months. So there are, you know, there's time passing and at stake, but it's not, you're not like faced with any specific decision to make on this. So the goals of the public meetings that we conducted were to help everyone that was interested in the conversation understand the purpose and the function of the transient occupancy overlay districts, how it, how it works in our zoning code. I have all those slides if we wanna look at any of them. And then just kind of hear from, uh, residents of neighborhoods where those potential new overlay districts were being discussed and document their, their support, their questions and concerns. So we notified all the residents and property owners within four hundred feet of both properties. So the property address got a letter as well as if there was a different address listed as ownership on the county auditor. So all of them got notices and were invited to this conversation. We had about twenty-six people attend, and then we had a number of, uh, planning commissioners, thank you for your attendance, some city, city commissioners, and as well, um, a number of staff attended. Thirteen people within those conversations raised their hand and said they lived in those districts. Uh, and then we had, I asked them if they had ever stayed in a transient rental. Most of the folks that were there had, had stayed in one in another city. Um, the conversation near Lyons Park, we did have, um, some, some opposition. I mean, there was, I think that overall the conversation was like skewed a little negative, I think, in that first meeting. Um, Mr. Maldonado, who was interested in an overlay district in that area, had previously sent out three hundred letters that he sent out personally and never received any opposition. Uh, we did have a gentleman come to the meeting that had forty-six signatures that were against the idea of overlay there. And, um, we had seventeen signatures in support. So there's definitely a lot of community conversation going on in that, um, in that community on West Monroe Street near Lyons Park.
Can I ask you? Pause and clear for just a second. So the letters were sent out to all property owners within four hundred feet of the properties.
Correct.
Uh, but, uh, as I understand it, an overlay district isn't going to be a property. It's going to be broad, broader than that. So if we actually did something and made a recommendation, uh, that would go to a still larger group of people.
Correct. Yeah, so if we drew a district, that would be a public hearing and an even larger group of people will get a notice.
What property was the four hundred feet centered on that?
I've got it on that, I'll show you. And then the McDonald Street conversation, it was pretty much, much more positive. Um, everyone there, there was a number of, I think, investors there, local investors that were like, how do we do this? Where are we allowed to do this? And I have a property here. And so it was a, a little bit more of a positive conversation in general. Although we may have gotten, like, the first meeting, we, we advertised them both as you all, anyone can come. We're generally framing conversation one about, um, McDonough, or West Monroe and conversation two about McDonough, but they're both kind of open and available. So there were general, like, items of support, things we heard, um, general support about allowing more transient rental in the city. Interested, you know, general interest in understanding where it's currently allowed. Um, and interested in how, understanding the permitting process, you know, how, if they, if they wanted to do this, how could they get the permit to do it? Um, people have good experience in other cities, good experience locally. On the other side, items of concern, we got a lot of questions about how, you know, how any nuisance properties or nuisance owners would be, you know, how that's gonna be enforced, concerns about noise, property damage, parking, just a negative experience of the, um, neighborhood if, if transient rental was allowed. There was definitely, um, some nuanced conversation about housing affordability in the city and how this could affect if it rises property values. You know, does that, uh, put us in a position where we don't have enough affordable housing for people that need, need housing here? Um, people wanting to know their neighbors and then some personal safety concerns, especially when they're talking about like children. You know, my children play here. I don't want strangers in the neighborhood, that sort of comment. So that was the kind of high-level recap of that from just, you know, the, the bullet point summary, but a number of you were there, so. If you wanna talk about that more too. The citywide surveys, we got seventy-seven responses for this. Uh, sixty-two percent of those respondents are city residents, indicated that they were city residents. And sixty-nine of those responses said that they did not own a transient rental property currently, and thirty-one percent currently do own one. Uh, we asked if transient rentals are currently allowed at your residence or in your neighborhood. And fifty-five percent of, uh, the respondents said, yes, they're allowed. And twenty percent was not sure, and twenty-five percent said no. We asked about experience in other cities, so have you ever used one? About half the attendees, or half the respondents said, yes, they've used one many times. Um, twenty-six percent said once or twice, about seventy-five percent. Three-quarters of the folks who answered this, or actually eighty percent of folks that answered this, said, yes, they've stayed in one. Um, we asked an open-ended question and forty-eight people answered that. This generally said they had a very good experience with rent, you know, being a, a renter of a transient rental and that the properties were well-maintained and that they offered a different experience than a hotel, which is what my research found as well. So this was interesting. We kinda asked about the rental land use regulation. And it was almost the same question, but a little bit different. So I thought it was interesting to look at this side by side. So one was if Sandusky were to allow more transient rentals in the city, where should they be allowed? And the forty-five percent of answers said everywhere, like the whole city. Um, eighteen percent said in more zoning categories, fourteen percent said add new overlay districts. Um, twenty-five percent said where the residents and the owners ask for them, allow them there. And seventeen percent said don't allow any more than exists today. And they were allowed to select more than one, so those are not gonna add to a hundred, because I know you were counting, Mr. Zuloff.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm observing that you could frame this two ways.
Sure.
Uh, you know, that forty-five percent said allow them everywhere and fifty-five percent said, no, don't allow it everywhere.
Fair enough, yeah. Uh, the other question was, how do you think the Sandusky, City of Sandusky should approach the process of allowing more res- transient rentals in the city? And here sixty percent said allow them anywhere, uh, twenty-seven percent said allow them downtown, twelve percent said allow them in the cor- on the corridors, and twenty percent said in specific neighborhoods. And there was an other, I think that on both of these, it was like three percent said other and four percent said other. So I cut it off the slide so you could see the, um, kind of media options a little easier.
So when asked a different question, sixty percent said allow them everywhere instead of forty-five percent.
So why when you take like a personality test, they ask you the same question seventy-five times? It's just, I mean, it's one tool to, to help broaden our understanding, really. It's not an end-all, be-all. Um, we asked, are you concerned about transient rentals in your neighborhood? Sixty-eight percent of people said no, twenty-three percent said yes, and nine percent said unsure. And if, um, if you have con- specific concerns, please explain. So twenty-four of the respondents answered that question. And in general, there was some themes of a desire for more owner-occupied homes in the city in general to keep our full-time residents in the city, uh, concern that guests of a transient rental would be a nuisance for noise or property damage, concern for the long-term affordability of housing again, and concerns that owners wouldn't, might not maintain their property or manage their guest behavior. So very similar concerns of what we heard at the meetings in person. There were some other comments, so it was kind of the last question was like, do you have any other comments? And, um, there were some comments about allowing more transient rental being good for economic development for the city uh, 'cause it offers the options for how people are wanting to travel, that in, you know, folks' experience, the properties are well-maintained. We should allow more people, there were several that were like, I welcome them in my neighborhood, bring them here. Um, there was concern that housing prices are increasing in the city and, you know, the affordability again. And then code enforcement and permitting is important. So if we do allow them, making sure that we are enforcing parking requirements and we're inspecting the properties as our permit process expects us to be doing. We also put together just a couple considerations, so in, in kind of within those conversations and on offside conversations with y'all, I've had some questions of like, will help us get some data and understanding of how we would have this conversation? So it's some things that come up. There's some staff contact, so we, this is a conversation that is in high demand. It's not just, you know, these two owners that have pursued this process and we had this conversation. We get to daily calls. The code enforcement, Kelly told me that she will field four or five calls about this a day. So people are really interested in operating transient rentals in the city and understanding where they can do that, where it's allowed and how to do it. Um, it is an economic development opportunity. It is, you know, we have a lot of local owners and operators. It's an opportunity for local people to buy a house and operate it and bring more money in, uh, for, you know, we, we are a destination economy. So bringing people in to help support our local businesses. Also, I think, um, historic preservation and housing stock preservation is a consideration if we're seeing more investment in the housing stock we have. That overall, so if we're not losing houses, we don't have to, you know, long-term tear down any more houses, then we're gonna have more affordable housing because we have more housing online and it's really hard to build new. It's expensive to build new. Um, other things that we see is, you know, based on research and what we heard is that a lot of these are cleaned up and their properties, right? They're, they're maintaining them because they're operating a business and they're not gonna get renters. If, they're not gonna get people booking their Airbnb if it's not cleaned up and it's not nice when they get there. So they're investing a lot. They're putting big TVs inside. And so the owners tend to have a high interest in making sure that their guests are not gonna be a nuisance in the neighborhood because they are investing in the property too. Um, some census data and Bureau of Labor Statistics data for you. Uh, so the owner-occupied housing unit rate in twenty nineteen in the United States was sixty-four percent. In Sandusky, it's about half. So about half of our, um, our housing is rental and half is owner-occupied. Uh, our median home value is eighty-six thousand, six hundred dollars, which is far below what the United States, um, median home value is at two hundred and seventeen thousand. Ohio is at a hundred and forty-five thousand. So we do, I mean, in, in relation to the state and to the United States, we have incredibly affordable housing just overall. Um, our gross rents here are also significantly under the United States in gross rent. And, uh, so for ownership and for rental, we, we have relatively affordable housing. We also have higher poverty rates, so that's, you know, housing burden, um, also considers, is considered there. Um, I was interested to see like how many people are moving. This is a census data statistic. So people that were living in the same house a year ago, eighty-four point eight percent, uh, which is very consistent with Ohio and the United States. So we haven't seen a lot of people moving out, um, in twenty nineteen. And we can check that data. That would be a way that we could measure how much in migration, out migration. If we did allow more transient rental, to see if we were seeing displacement would be a way that we could measure that over time. If we maybe did kind of a slow expansion of the program and took a look at that metric, that would be something that's interesting. And then housing prices increased. So the last five years, we've seen about a twenty-five percent increase in housing prices in the city of Sandusky, which is lower than the state of Ohio. So we've seen a lot of growth. And I think Columbus and central Ohio is probably driving this because they are expecting to add like two million people by twenty fifty. So they, uh, overall Ohio housing prices have gone up about thirty-seven percent in the last five years. And the United States as a whole, which is like, you know, a huge area, is fourteen percent. Uh, we made a map to look at this. This is the pretend change in market value by census block over the past five years. So there, the, the very light-colored areas where we have a lot of industry, like along Tiffin and the waterfront, um, and then like where Sandusky Plaza is near Mylan Road is the only real places in town that decreased at all. So that was like a between, um, negative one to negative eighteen percent decrease. And then a lot of our housing has, was stabilized in price over the last five years. We did see some pretty significant increase from forty-three percent to eighty-eight percent over by, uh, Castaway Bay. And then there's like a chunk right north of Monroe Street. So these are my census blocks, so we didn't like create these outlines. Um, but there is a, a bit like north of Monroe, kind of south of Jefferson, that saw a hot, pretty, a little bit more high. So like twenty to forty percent increase. And then everywhere else was kind of moderate or stable over the last five years. A couple people asked like, where are the rentals in, in Sandusky? So this is all the blue dots and they're kind of overlapping, so we have a lot of, I mean, most of our housing is where the concentration of dots are. Uh, but this, these are as of today, the rental, the registered rental properties in the city. The orange dots are the registered Airbnb, you know, transient rental properties in the city. Which I think we could make this map a little easier to read, but it's still interesting. And then on West Monroe, so what we have seen is, um, so Mr. Maldonado's property is right there. Like, I think it's either this one or this one. It's right across from the big Lyons Park sign. So directly across from Lyons Park, view of the water. He has signatures from this block of, everywhere I outlined of neighbor, of owners that support doing a rental overlay district in this neighborhood. It's called Winnebago Avenue, which kind of has a vibe to it if you think about it as a destination. Obviously, it's walkable to Lyons Park. It's really easily accessible to, um, you know, Catawba, go on west or like the Trout Camp. They have a boat ramp there. So there's definitely some amenities, you know, proximity to commercial or something in this area.
Aaron, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but before we get too far off from the last slide, were you able to, um, pull up anything? It just reminded me that map you showed was great, but, uh, with regard to the current overlays that allow for transient rentals already and how many properties were located in those, uh, is, is there any indication of that on this map?
We could zoom into those, so, I mean, everywhere where we're permitting it, it's gonna be allowed. But the code overlay or the-
I mean, currently. Remember, I was wanting to know basically how many properties already that investors, that we could push the investors there as opposed to bringing overlays to where the investors want them.
Yes, yes.
What, what's already dis-
Available.
Already available that-
Yeah.
We wouldn't have to change anything, that we could encourage. Because I really liked what you said last time at the meeting about, um, the corridors or different places. Like, I think that the overlays are great. I don't know if I like following the investor. I wanna know what makes sense for the city economically.
Yeah.
Um, and, and then move from there. So I guess I wanted to kind of-
Then make you that map.
Then make you that map, and I apologize.
That's okay.
Um, it's a little, I think it's a little trickier to pull that data, but what we could do is make a map of the, and I do want my notebook real quick, I'm sorry.
No.
I just, I've been curious.
I assumed you would all give me homework from this?
So any place is in general business, right, you, you can, you can do transient now.
General business, downtown business, commercial, recreation.
I thought you were six.
There's six.
Yeah, I think, I think Ms. Castillo makes a really good point, let's start with that.
Residential business.
Residential, roadside, and up, correct?
Yeah.
Let's start with that map, and then with the existing overlay, uh, in the code, and then we can see from there.
Yeah, and I do have those maps, but Ms. Castillo was specifically asking like how many units of housing were within those districts, right?
Well, I, I mean, we can start with the, the maps and then, I do, I don't want to get too finny.
I do have those maps.
I do have those maps with me. Um, okay. And if it's something that I can deduce myself, I can figure that out too, I just want to see what we're even, where we're at before we decide where we're going.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'm not really sure of the right place to ask this question, but if you refer back to the slide that we just flipped off of again, it seems like, do I recall there's something in the ordinance for establishing, to consider when establishing a transient rental, that it's a neighborhood where there is a need for enhancement to the property or, or that it would-
So the answer is, it's a, it's a neighborhood that is in decline, is the word that's used, and has to be, also has to be in close proximity to a commercial or retail district.
There it is.
And, and that raises the question about all the dots of the Shaw say.
Well, those are, well, that's a result of litigation, that's a different issue, because those, those, those spots, if they're, if they're year-round rentals or monthly rentals, I think they're okay, right?
Yeah.
But it's the, but the, the dots, the orange dots are the transient rentals, and those are grandfathered in because the city changed its ordinance, but the ones who were at existing transient rentals were permitted by the court to continue that business.
That, that's what I wanted to be refreshed on.
So here's the zoning language you mentioned, Shelby created to spur investment in a declining geographic area with the goal of increasing property values and maintenance of homes in areas that are in close proximity to commercial and retail areas.
So, I'm sorry, I just want to point out again through you, Mr. Chairman, that was something that I also brought up during the conversations, is, it, what, are we, do, this is again going back to why I said I want to know, I, I love the idea of transient rentals overlay, we have to keep up with the times, it's good for the economy, we know all of that, but it has to make sense, and I don't want to just take a, a neighborhood that's seeming to function fine and start making all these changes, because by definition, that's not what we should be using these overlays for. So that was just to make that point, I had the same kind of curiosity with regard to the definition.
Yeah, so we started, started asking the question, how do you define a declining neighborhood?
And found that it's-
And how do you, and what's the, what is the commercial, what's close proximity means?
Right.
Commercial and retail, so that was kind of, this was kind of designed to start answering those questions and, and then get some homework to what you want to see next time and move this conversation forward.
Mr. Murray, do you know any of the history on that ordinance?
Um, yeah, I was here at the time, and it was-
That second paragraph seems to be some unnecessary complex language.
Uh, well, in complex, I thought it kind of vague, frankly.
It is vague, it's not, it's not a direct clear, and if there's not a direct process for like, here's how to define when, where the new overlay will be, so, it-
I don't know.
Would y'all be okay if I just, I had like three more slides, sorry. No, it's okay, it's okay, because we, I've got, this one's the zoning, and like, I have some more, I have the, the process exactly as how it's laid out in the code, but I want to make sure that we, I show you the, the other ones here, just so we can get through this and then-
You got to give it to you.
So the Lions Park, I did take some photos and it, that doesn't show up, and this might be something that you want to look at later, just kind of go out in the neighborhood on this specific block and take a look at the quality of the housing and, you know, the repair and everything, there are views to the water from here, so that, I mean, I think there's, you could argue there's benefit to a visitor coming here, and you could argue that there's, would be benefit for investment in these homes. Then next is the Madonna Street, so the blue is generally the area where we have interest that we were kind of talking about, it's near McDonald and Adams, West Adams. We also, I highlighted in yellow, like everywhere where transient rental is allowed nearby, so it is very closely allowed nearby, and then the orange circle is kind of a reasonable walking distance destination, so this, this section of town is very walkable to downtown to sent, to, that's not Huron Park, is it, that's?
Miami Park.
Miami Park, but it's not called Miami Park.
Central Park.
Central Park, thank you, and then the Shelby Street Boat Launch, so there's some pictures from the neighborhood there, and again, you could argue that, that this is a decent place for visitors to be and it's walkable, there's historic architecture that could, could use investment, there's some other architecture that would benefit from investment, just, I mean, you could always make that argument, I think, I could make that argument anywhere. And then another thing that came up a couple times and, and we really started to get excited about this idea, is because we have so much interest in transient rental in the city, and local business zoning is the only commercial zoning category that currently does not allow transient rental, it also is clustered along Hancock Street and Columbus Avenue in places where we would love to see that historic architecture be preserved, and there's a lot of buildings that have second stories that if you could use the transient rental income, because I mean, these properties can bring in like four thousand dollars a month, like fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year, when a regular rental brings in like eleven or twelve in the city right now, so it's a big difference.
So you're saying we've changed local business zoning to permit transient rental?
Yeah, we started getting excited about this idea, if, if we allow local business to have transient rental in it, there's just a lot of significant architecture along those corridors.
Well, Erin, to, to complete the thought, the transient, can you go back, you just changed the slide, can you?
I just put up pictures of some of those buildings.
So the local business zoning, as you pointed out, does not allow transient rentals.
Correct.
But it's also true that the overlay, the transient rental overlay legislation does not allow the overlay to apply to, to local businesses, is that correct?
I do not know that for sure, I, I think you can put it over top of any zoning.
I, no, it's-
Is it for, it might be, it might read in there that it's for residential, that it's an overlay for residential.
Well, there, there was, there may be an unintended, an unintended oversight, I guess, in the legislation, where, because we, we ran into, wasn't, was it, we just did a, we just did a property, what, last month, the month before, that we had to change the zoning to allow the transient?
The last two-
From what to what?
The last two rezonings we did were rezoning from local business to residential business to allow transient rental, and both of those were approved, and so that's another signal, if we're rezoning properties that are allowed to use, that maybe we, we take a look at the uses allowed in that.
If, if it's true that the transient rental legislation does not allow local business to, to, the overlay, then that needs to be remedied, it was deliberate that local business, because it can, it was deliberate that local business, in the very nature of, of local business is, is inferred in its, in its name, it was quite deliberate that that not be included in the, in the transient rental, I, I think, because it's, it's, it's not, it's not a hardcore commercial use, it's, it's neighborhood business, right, it's local business, so I think we have to think very carefully about saying, hey, this is a great idea, let's just, you know, broad-brush, allow transient in, in local businesses.
Yeah, but it's all the table, we can, we can-
Right, right.
Change all these things, and you know, for the sea change in the last ten years in terms of what people want out of local business, and these are local businesses, so, I mean, I, I think it's all, I think it's all for grabs.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, just from a global approach to this issue, is it possible that the city would reconsider the, the statute itself as part of the process?
I'm signaling to Mr. Zuloff that I think that-
Okay.
-we should be open to, I mean, we've got some homework to do, because cities across the country are grappling with this issue.
Right.
And there are a lot of unhappy citizens, and there are a lot of happy citizens, there are a lot of happy investors, there are a lot of happy visitors, so, you know, we've got to strike the right balance, but I think that inevitably we, we should be thinking about whether we also want to recommend a change to the legislation, absolutely.
And, and I, in the interest of disclosure, let everybody know that maybe a year or year and a half ago, I assisted Mr. Maldonado in drafting that initial letter to neighbors, so I certainly don't believe I can vote on his, any application by him, but I don't even know if I can participate in discussion. As a general viewpoint, I think that there are many, many, many benefits to the city as a whole, but again, I don't know if I can participate in even general discussion.
Well, you'd have to, my own opinion is you can, you should call the Ohio Ethics Commission, get some advice from them.
Okay.
I think this is probably a little while out before we actually get to voting on some specific things.
Right, I just want to put that out there.
And within twenty-five days, they will give you a written opinion letter.
Okay.
So, very helpful.
Thank you.
The final piece of this was just to say from, from the staff opinion, from our recommendations, that we support amending the local business zoning district to permit transient occupancy, and that, that we ask if you consider a slow and measured expansion of overlay districts and neighborhoods, especially in areas with strong local interest, so is there a way we can, you know, slowly expand this program and, and decide what metrics we want to measure it with? That would be kind of our recommendation to, for you to all come to.
That's good to hear.
I'll thank Mr. Chairman, to you, Erin, I really liked what you said to me about, and excuse me if I'm misquoting you, but from a planning perspective, because I was really grappling with the idea of, again, I can say it a thousand times, I do support transient rentals, I think it's the way of the world, we have to keep up, you know, like Mr. Murray pointed out, with everybody else and what everybody's doing and all that, so I just want to say that, but also struggling with the idea of just kind of randomly considering overlays in areas where people have presented them to us, and you mentioned one reason why McDonough would work from an actual planning perspective, and not just for the Stucks who I love, but that's neither here nor there, it's not about that. You mentioned something about from downtown, a fifteen to twenty-minute walk would include McDonough and some of that area, and that made a lot of sense to me, I would like to see kind of what that hypothetical map of an overlay would look like with regard to something like that, or again, reiterating my earlier point, just where it would make the most sense in the city, as opposed to just these kind of, what I feel like are random places to, to put overlays.
Yeah, so Ms. Castillo was referring to our, our conversation where I was mentioning walkability and the pe, the amount of time people generally spend to walk a place is about fifteen to twenty minutes, which translates to about three-quarters of a mile to a mile, so if you did a radius from our downtown, if that's where we expect our tourists to spend most of their money, or, you know, of course, they're going to be going to the plaza and local businesses and another thing around the area too, but our concentration of retail and, and commercial uses are in our, you know, in our central business district, that would be about the, the footprint of the opportunity zone, which is Monroe at the south and Camp to the west and Megs to the east, so that is your kind of walkable core of the city, which is reflected in the, you know, the street grid that we have, that Sandusky historically built out as a walkable city, before we started, you know, in the sixties, you, if you look at a place that built out then, it's just all parking lots, where we have this lovely dense street grid because it, it was built when people walked most places or rode their bike or, you know, took a train to, to places.
Each property that's converted from a full-time rental, you take a three-bedroom house with five residents and you convert it to a transient rental, you've just lost five residents, when you're counting residents, we're counting every resident right now, we're hoping we stay above twenty-five thousand in the next census. I'm not, this is not a case against transients, I'm saying this is something to be considered, we're saying, hey, this is a great thing, why, why would you not want to do that?
And I would further point out that the largest source of our revenue in the city remains the income tax, and transients don't pay income taxes, so, you know, that's, that's a fair consideration.
So a lot, a, a, a lot of things to think about here.
I, I would say, though, that it likely increases, it definitely is going to increase property values, so I don't think a bunch of increasing property values is going to result in less people living in the city. I understand your math, you know, that if you take a, a house that five people live in and you turn it into VRVO, you're going to have less residents, but there is very likely going to be more residents moving in to other places.
It's a, it's a lot to-
I mean, yeah, there's a lot of sides to it.
Right.
And we have to also consider our, our hotel economy and all of that, being that we are a tourist town, we will be taking business from them if we just say, anyone everywhere can have this, we have to play that balancing act as well.
That is, when you read about what's happening in other cities, that is a big part of the debate, hoteliers don't necessarily like Airbnbs.
So, so having said, pointed that out, I'd like to also point out the possibility of some sort of lawful way to do temporary situations, we're going to have for the next three years, I read, that we're going to have a, a triathlon in Sandusky for three years straight, okay? Now, how many people is that going to bring to the area? I presume, I don't know what the date is, it's going to be July, it's not like it's a time when we have a surplus hotels available, you know, let's, let's say that we had the, a national political convention in the area, I mean, just as an ad absurdum hypothetical case, what, what would you do then, you know, so, and, and we can burn that bridge when we get to it, but there's lots of things to think about, I mean-
Let's cross it instead.
It's, it's a joke.
Oh, let's burn it.
To the chair.
Yeah.
I, in some of the research I've found, there are places that regulate transient occupancy where they, they have more lax recommend, or more lax rules when you have an owner from a house and you allow them to rent up to X number of days or months per year, so you are, you know, they, there's things you can do with that too, so that could be a way, you know, like, is, what are the slow and measured ways we could expand this, because we have a ton of interests, the more vibrancy we have, the more likely we are to attract an employer that's going to bring office workers that are going to pay in, income tax, the more, you know, if our housing's not falling apart, we're going to be more likely to attract people that want to come here and buy one and live, because right now you have to have some, I, from my perspective, I just moved here, you have to have some guts to buy some of the housing and be willing to do some work on it.
So mindful of the fact that Ms. Blair has a commitment to some really wild and wicked women.
Which is right now.
Which is right now, so I, I think, I think we should spend a little time thinking about what we want to ask in terms of homework, so I, I think you've heard a couple of things, I know you've made notes of those, I think my preference would be to get kind of almost a cafeteria menu, maybe somebody out there in the, in, in, in your field, your professional field has summarized the different approaches to transient rental.
I have some articles I can share.
Yeah, I think, that'd be very helpful, and then I think also, I lost track of what the also was, what else do you want?
Advanced copies.
Hmm?
Advanced copies.
That too.
You know what I want.
Yeah, what else do you want?
She knows.
Oh, she knows.
But, um-
Oh, I know, I, I'm sorry, I remembered my fault.
Go, go!
So the, the other thing is that I, I appreciate some feedback in terms of what we should be thinking in terms of the existing legislation, which, which requires it to be a neighborhood in decline, and that we should might be, maybe also talk about proximity, and those might be some thoughts that Mr. Hyall might be able to add to as well.
And-
Could, could I say one further thing? I, I personally would like to see the, the global approach and then see if attention needs to be paid to the language of the current statute, or ordinance, I should say, rather than start with the current ordinance and then say, well, what can we do within that? That would be my thought, so.
Two, two valid approaches, I think we, and I just think we're capable of thinking about more than one idea at a time, so let's do both.
Okay.
Anything else that the commission would like to have?
Just, just let me reiterate, I've seen flashes of things that I would like to-
Yeah.
-read and consider, and Kristen already knows my technological challenges, I'd be glad to- I'd be glad to stop and pick up a hard copy.
Glad, we'd be glad to print it out for you. I have, so this like back deck of slides that you see me flip through just because I'm trying to help, you know, put things up, which I realize can be distracting. There's some of, from the presentation that I presented. So I'll, I'll send you that one too, so you can see what was presented to in the meetings, which there's going to be some repeats because I have like a slide archive in this one and then this one.
And then I think we all need to be cautious about the fact, although we want to talk about this, Mr. Hyal will hear, or maybe is here, but he'll, he'll appreciate the, the admonition. We can't do a reply to all with this stuff. This commission hasn't done that, so that's great. But, you know, we can't do a reply to all, otherwise that's an illegal public meeting. And so, you know, if you've got a request for additional information, you can share that with everyone, but this, you just can't comment, I think this is good, I think this is bad.
On an email thread.
Quick, quick question. Maybe I missed.
Thanks, Brandon.
No, this is green.
What do you say, the voice of God agrees?
He said, that is correct.
Maybe I missed it, but how, how was this questionnaire or survey sent out or how, how did you?
That was on, so we have a survey tool called 123GIS or something. It's within the GIS software we use. So we, we created a link. It was on our website on the like, cityofsandusky.com/transientrentals. So it was on there and then we pushed it on social media. We, we put, we put it in the letters we sent out and we pushed it on social media like four or five times.
So the, you were, the replies were based on percentages. Do you have any idea the number of the individual responses?
Yeah, there were 77 responses. So I have the percentages and the, like some metrics on the individual responses there too. And if you'd like, I can give you the PDF if you want to read all those.
Not a large number of responses, but.
Nah, it wasn't a huge number. There was actually, I put it in the city manager report one evening for city commission. And after that, after Eric read it at the city commission meeting, I think we had 40 people answer it the next day. So people are listening to the city commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would admonish everyone, I shouldn't have to say this. We all have to remind ourselves, a self-selected survey is statistically completely meaningless and completely distorts reality. You can't trust it at all. What you can do with these, with these surveys is flush out things you didn't think of. Get ideas, get thoughts that you didn't think of, like, oh, we didn't even realize that, right? So especially open-ended questions are helpful. Relying on the numbers are virtually meaningless. I mean, and not only meaningless, it's, it's just a trap. You'll, you'll, you'll get so totally wrong information from a self-selected survey that you'll, you'll make terrible decisions if you, if you don't keep that in mind.
That's why I asked that question.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly appreciate that, but it's good that you should mention it.
Yeah.
I would move if we adjourn.
There are a couple of folks who could attend to the meeting. If anyone would like to speak on, on the subject or you've just been following the debate and it's going to go on for a while and nothing more to add at this point. I didn't want to deny the opportunity.
My name's David Stuck. I actually live at 922 West Adams Street downtown and I actually own the two properties on McDonald Street, which is under discussion, 414 and 418 McDonald Street. All of my properties are currently within accessibility from the backyards. So I would be an onsite property owner.
Would you mind going up to the microphone so we can hear you for the record?
You can hear me.
That's how they do the minutes, the record.
Oh, no, no, when they make up the minutes, it's just easier. Okay, sorry. Yeah, so again, my name is David Stuck. I live at 922 West Adams Street. The two properties in question on McDonald Street, I own at 414 and 418. All the properties that I own are currently accessible through the backyard. So if this would come to reality, I would be an onsite property owner, managing the property for transient rentals. And I can tell you right now, the 418 property that my wife and I purchased last year, my 89-year-old mother currently lives in the downstairs. So the upstairs unit would be potentially a transient rental property as well as a 414 house just to the north of that. So my wife and I are very excited. We, we took a property that was at 414, which is in disrepair and bankruptcy, purchased the property and totally renovated it. Was currently used as a, as a guest house for our friends and family as well as the upstairs as well. So, you know, we, we've, we've taken some properties in disrepair, certainly put quite a bit of investment in it and we're looking to not only see a return on that investment, but also participate in the growth of Sandusky, bringing residents and, and visitors into the city and showing them the wonders of Sandusky, Ohio. So I just wanted to put that to you, so.
Thank you, David Stuck, and thank you for precipitating the conversation that we're having today and probably in a couple, for a couple of months to come.
Well, I'm, I'd be more than welcome to assist in any way I can in future conversations. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Just want to make sure if this is approved, you're not going to evict your 95-year-old mother.
Only if she, only if she follows the rules and regulations that we. If we evict her, she'd probably move in to my house at 922, which I think my wife would have a few comments on.
Okay, I love that.
Thank you.
Those are the folks willing to speak. Cheryl maintained that motion. Mr. Murray.
Mr. Maldonado.
Oh, I see. Didn't get up before, I didn't realize that. Do you have anything to add, sir?
Yeah, my name's Jim Maldonado, I own the property on 3328 West Monroe. And I've been rehabbing it for a while and stuck a lot of money into it. And I just think it's a great location. When you walk out the front door and you're looking at the City of Sandusky sign, the park, the water, you know, as the immediate group that I've talked to, everything seems to be going really well. And I just think it's a great location to get vacationers in here. I know we're running out of spots for people. Talked to several people saying that they don't have any place to stay when they come here. You know, as far as VRBO, a lot of people don't want to stay in hotels anymore. And that's just the way it's all coming to. And I think that's just a great opportunity for, you know, the City of Sandusky to get people back downtown. You know, all these people are going to go out to eat all the time and so, you know, it's kind of what we're looking at and just a nice place to stay and a nice place to visit. And that's kind of what we're looking at.
How's it we've been too? Murray here. All right, thank you.
I make a motion, I did make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. All right, thank you, everyone.
Looks like I can still make the witches walk if I run. I can still make the witches walk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is that your daughter?
That's my daughter.
Witch in training.
Yeah, baby witch.
We like the formality, I guess, the ritual of. But you could just declare as adjourned.